Okay, so the title of this final session is Visions for the Future. Okay, so it's really sort of this is, I think, is a nice way to end our symposium. So the three talks will be, the first, like I said, by Thomas Spock on why cognitive neuroscience leads to socio-linguistics, followed by Ellen Bialystok's What's the Mechanism?, Framing the Questions for Future Research, and finally Antonella Soracek, Deconstructing the Monolingual Advantage. So I will just give like a brief introduction to our three speakers. I know they need no introduction, but I'll do it anyway because it is my pleasure to do so. And I will start again in alphabetical order. So Thomas Spock, so Thomas is a reader in psychology at the University of Edinburgh. He's originally from Poland. He's a polyglot, speaks like, I don't know how many different languages, can't keep track. And his background is originally in neuropsychology. And since the 1990s, he has been working on the relationship between language and other cognitive functions. But more recently, although it has been a number of years now, he has become increasingly involved in research from the cognitive aspects of bilingualism. Among the many projects in which Thomas is involved, I will mention one here, which is the Multilingualism Empowering Individuals Transforming Societies, which is a big collaborative research collaboration funded by the UK Arts Humanities and Research Council, where Thomas leads the Strandl Multilingualism and Cognition. Thomas will probably be known to a lot of you because he's very active on Twitter. He's very active in public engagement. And he is the co-founder of the blog HealthyLinguisticDiet.com. So Google that if you want to find more about that. And of course, he's a co-director of Bilingualism Matters founded by Antonella Soracek. More about that later on. So thank you, Thomas. And next, we've got Ellen Bialystok. Ellen Bialystok is a distinguished research professor of psychology and Walter Gordon Research Chair of Lifespan Cognitive Development at York University. Among the many honours that Ellen has received in her career, I will mention that she's an officer of the Order of Canada and a fellow of the Royal Society of Canada. Science research uses behavioural and neuroimaging methods to examine the effect of bilingualism on cognitive processes across the lifespan. And her research with adults and children has been instrumental in redefining the way in which we think about the relationship between language experience and cognition. And finally, Antonella. Antonella Soracek is a professor of developmental linguistics at the University of Edinburgh. Antonella is originally from Italy and she has a background in psycholinguistics. Her research focuses on a number of interrelated questions that bring together linguistics, experimental psychology, and cognitive science. And Antonella has worked extensively in many different bilingual populations. And she's also well-known for her work on language attrition, so not acquisition, but loss. Many of you would also know that Antonella is the founder of Bilingualism Matters, which is a research and information centre of the University of Edinburgh that she founded in 2008, and which now has 26 branches all over the world, including one here at Reading. And I'm also proud to say, on a personal note, that I was one of Antonella's first PhD students about 20 years ago now. So this is my very short introduction. We could go on for a long time, but your achievements of all the three of you are too many. And so without further ado, I will please welcome our first speaker, Thomas Spock. Thank you, Thomas.
Okay, hello, thank you very much. Can you see me or hear me? And can you see the slides?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. So thank you very much for the invitation to this really fascinating closing session of what has been, I find, an amazing online meeting. I mean, really setting the standards for future. And since we have today Dragon Boat Festival, a very happy Dragon Boat Festival to everybody who is celebrating, and a lot of delicious zongzi. However, I would like to tell, take you, ah, now there are problems with next slide. Let me look whether I can. Ah, so let me take you to Germany, since we cannot travel at the moment, to the ancient Mesopotamia, right in China. And many of you who were going on travels via Dubai or Abu Dhabi or Doha will remember flying over South East Turkey and then Iraq and seeing these two famous rivers, Euphrates and Tigris. Fascinatingly, they are very, very close, close to the source. Then they go apart to come back together again. So I would like to use this metaphor to speak about the relationship of socio-linguistics and cognitive science. Now, here are two papers from around 1960. One on the left is Robert Gardner and Wallace Lambert, Motivational Variables in Second Language Acquisition, a paper which was incredibly influential in starting the whole research on motivation, motivational factors, and so on in language learning. On the right is a paper which many of you will know, Peel and Lambert, 2062, a paper which basically started a reappraisal of bilingualism as something positive possibly, rather than a disadvantage destroying children's intelligence. Now, both papers were probably not recognised to be as important in the time they were written, but now we would say they really started very important developments. And they were written by the same co-author, Lambert-Wallace, at the same place, Montreal. So from this point of view, around 1960, it was quite clear that these two areas in some way belong together. Now, let us move to the late 80s. That was the time where I entered the field doing a PhD in aphrodisiology, so basically neurology of language, in Freiburg in Braskau in Germany. And at that time, the predominant models were very modular. So the general dominant idea or theory was the modularity of mind, the idea of informationally encapsulated modules, of which language was one, and models which were very deterministic and static. So I would compare them a little bit with a painting by Modrić, Modrić, which you have here. Or in fact, I mean, thank you to my daughter for posing, a kind of chest of drawers where you can put things in a place where everything has a place and every place has a thing. And they were often seen, so to say, through this type of of models, like logogin model which I have here, so-called box and arrows models. Now, they were quite beautiful, but they were difficult for definitely for cognitive neuroscientists trying, for instance, study recovery from aphasia because they were not very good in explaining change. Once you have a lesion, why do people recover? Why are people getting better? And secondly, it was not also easy to accommodate bilingualism. I mean, is it that, you know, you have these languages very separately or are they in some way related? Now, if we now fast forward to what we have at the moment, then we have completely different models. So modern models, I would say, are more like paintings by Escher or by by Jackson Pollock. They are very interconnected and interactive with emergent structures rather than predetermined ones, with very important notion of lifelong neuroplasticity and adaptation to environment. So that means it's not that everything is determined by genetics and our first two or three years. It means that the system is basically open to change throughout our lives. Now, for me, what is probably the most beautiful illustration of this shift between these two paradigms in the science of bilingualism are the two models of David Green. So the Model 98, which on the left has, you know, I would say, this kind of pure innocence of the modular models, although importantly, David Green already then recognised the importance of experience of the language practice. So we have all this material already there. But it came to fruition in the model which developed is Jürgen Abutalebi, 2013, the Adaptive Control Hypothesis. And for me, these two models, I mean, if you look at them just as these pictures, you see these different aesthetics. And in some way, they remind me of early and late Wittgenstein. Something which, you know, you will always have debates. Do you prefer the early Wittgenstein of Tractatus Logico Philosophicus, very, very precise? Or do you prefer the late Wittgenstein of the Philosophische Untersuchungen, much more complex, but in a way maybe doing more justice to the complexity of the life that we are trying to address? And what does it mean to bilingualism? It means that the papers nowadays are looking not only at language. They are suddenly, if we assume that language behaviour is so important throughout lifetime, then suddenly socio-linguistic variables become important for bilingualism. Linguistic environment does matter, the direct environment where we live. And nowadays, more and more, the digital environment, people we can communicate in via internet. The social environment, all the conventions, prestige, ideology, individual choice, identity, value judgements, language and mental exercise. So you see these two rivers coming back together again. And just two papers which for me illustrated, one where I was fortunate to be one of the co-authors with my PhD student Siak and Antonella being co-author, from Singapore, where we write Bilingual Experience in Edinburgh and Singapore Affects Attention Control and Natural Control Differently, 2018. And one year later, a paper here from a team in Reading, together with Antonella, Redefining Bilingualism as a Spectrum of Experiences. So we have now suddenly, the experience is important. So it's not just a module which is encapsulated forever. It's something which interacts with our behaviour. So let me come to my penultimate slide, bringing it all together. I mean, many of you know the saying that where there is crisis, there is an opportunity. But I want to turn it a little bit on the head. Where there's an opportunity, there is also a danger. So what are the dangers in future? One is very obvious, what I would call a carpet bombing approach to research design. And it has two aspects, technomyopia and N fetishism. So the idea that the best study must be huge and it has to have a lot of technical methods with it. Now, technology can help us a lot and a big N can help us as well. But a large study is not automatically better. You can have smaller studies with very well-defined subgroups, which can in fact be more informative than a big group with a lot of heterogeneity that we fail to capture. And one of the related problems is what I call the kind of cooking pasta in la pass phenomenon. The fact that it does matter where you do your experiment, in this case, the boiling point of water. Now, what we have nowadays is very often asymmetrical globalisation and assumed universality. So it means a study, a theory is developed, very often in US or UK, and then automatically assume that this is universal all over the world. And maybe the tests are being translated, but it means that the whole theory building is built on a relatively small group. And that relates to N fetishism because it means having hundred studies from a similar environment doesn't invalidate one single study from a different environment. What counts is not just a big N, is the diversity of groups that we have. And then the third problem, I would say baby in the bath, hyper fragmentation and dogmaticism. We can go into the other extreme and say that, you know, that would be the other extreme from this, you know, big carpet bombing studies, saying that everybody has a different experience. There's no such thing as language. There is no such thing as regularity. We have to see every person singularly. Nice idea, but at some point, it will make comparison studies impossible. So how can we approach it? Well, my answer comes from my favourite Sanskrit sloka, vidya dada divinayam, which means knowledge gives humbleness, knowledge makes humble. I think we have to be humble in what we conclude, in what we try to achieve. No single person, no single method, and definitely no single study, doesn't matter how large it is, will answer all our questions. We should be always on the lookout for implicit assumptions that we might have because where there is language, there is ideology. And let's not lose sight of the broader picture. That was I was trying to do, bring this metaphor of these two rivers starting together, going apart, coming back together again. So at the end of the day, it will not be one single study which will solve all the problems. Our knowledge comes from a lot of different studies, from diversity of approaches and of incremental increasing knowledge. And here, a little bit in my own case, some advertisement for studies we are doing as surveys. So you are happy to join. We are offering free courses in Spanish, Chinese, and Scots if you take place in our studies as well. And as always, I am very keen to communicate with people on Twitter. So that's why I put my Twitter here as well. And I am looking very much forward to the final discussion that we will have after the three talks in this panel. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you very much, Thomas, for a very concise presentation, straight to the point, fantastic. And Ellen on next, thank you, Ellen.
So I'm, okay, I'm still trying to get.
Okay, good afternoon or good morning, depending on where you are. And I want to start, of course, by thanking Christos for pulling together this really exciting last-minute session. And I'm just so happy to be here with my colleagues, Thomas and Antonella. I will, like Thomas, begin with a brief history because if you don't know where you've come from, you don't know where you're going. So let's see where we come from. In the first part of the 20th century, of course, it was very clear that bilingualism was a terrible idea and it made children confused, retarded. These are actual words from that literature. And that paper that Thomas showed from Montreal in 1962 had a profound effect on at least raising the questions. Now, there was a lot wrong with that study. It wasn't the perfect, brilliant, controlled study that it's now made out to be, but it was a landmark because it changed the discussion. Now, when they got their unexpected results, that bilingual children performed better than monolingual children on all these tasks, their interpretation was that bilingual children had mental flexibility. And given the times, that was actually an incredibly prescient description. And we might want to reconsider it now as we struggle to understand where 50 years of research has led us. Now, following that study, and again, as Thomas correctly pointed out, this all took place in Montreal. What it led to was an incredible initiative to establish French immersion programmes in Canada for anglophone children. It was a huge effort. It continues to this day. And research around those programmes was primarily aimed at evaluating this notion of bilingual education. And it all turned out to be a very positive thing. The next decade or so of research looked at whether bilingualism had an effect on children's metalinguistic awareness, a sensible idea since a language experience would most likely have a language outcome. But the surprising finding was that the biggest effects were not in language concepts. They were in managing conflict. Conflict in the context of those studies was conflict between form and meaning. But it led to a new line of research where language was thrown out. And the question boldly asked was, are bilingual kids just better at managing conflict? A very risky kind of question. And that continued until almost 2000 with many studies returning positive answers. But that was bizarre. Why would a language experience make children better at managing conflict? These tasks were starting to look like the newly, the new focus on tasks that we call executive functioning. Why would being bilingual affect executive functioning? How did that all work? Well, at this point, there were two really important theoretical papers that came out around the same time. One was David Green's Inhibitory Control Model, in which he explained how bilingual speakers avoid intrusions from the jointly activated but irrelevant non-target language and the Miyaki and colleagues' Unity and Diversity Model describing the structure of executive function. These papers had nothing to do with each other, but they converged on some very important conclusions. The main one for my purposes is they both highlighted inhibition. So from that time to the present, there has been an explosion of research on this question about the relation between bilingual experience and cognitive outcomes. And the vast majority of that research has been framed by Miyaki's Three Component Model and the notion of inhibition. So these are really important ideas. Now, since that time, in the last 20 years, the research has expanded to cover the entire lifespan using behavioural and imaging methods and including a broad range of tasks, methods, measures. I'm not going to discuss the research. I'm just trying to illustrate the scope. And again, the vast majority of that research is based on these notions of a componential structural conception of executive functioning in which inhibition is central. Now, let's just have a look at it. There's the Miyaki model. He has these three components. Each one is capturing the variance, the processing from a set of tasks. And they're related to each other in various ways. Now, the argument that, the logic of the argument when this model is used to examine bilingualism and cognition is this. Let's say you have a task from this model, for example, the Stroop task. And you find that on this task, bilinguals perform better than monolinguals. Well, according to the model, Stroop indexes inhibition. And so the conclusion is that bilinguals have better inhibition, which according to the model should extend to all manifestations of inhibition. That's the logic of the argument. The underlying assumption is that these skills, like inhibition, transfer. I'm going to come back to that word in a minute. They transfer within the components throughout this model. Well, these predictions that are the logical imperative of that model have not worked out so well. So the predictions, and I don't have time to give you the evidence. I'm just going to give you the conclusions. The predictions regarding the relationship among these components have not been supported very well. The things that should be different aren't. For example, if it's inhibition, bilinguals should be better than monolinguals on incongruent trials, but not on congruent trials. That never happens. They're always better on both. These different kinds of inhibition. There's response suppression, which is the ability to inhibit a response. And interference suppression, the ability to not be misled by distracting material. Turns out, they're completely different. But they're both in the same component in the Miyaki model. And about half the studies that set out to examine these predictions end up showing no group differences, particularly when adults. The other half show that the bilinguals perform better than the monolinguals. This is not type one error. If it would be type one error, there would be half the studies that show monolinguals perform better than bilinguals. That doesn't happen. So if we go back to our history, there was an important turning point in 2013 when Pap and Greenberg published a very major study that received a lot of attention, claiming, we found nothing. We tried to replicate all of those studies. There were no differences between monolinguals and bilinguals. Therefore, there is no bilingual advantage. A phrase that I avoid at all costs, but there you have it, they used it. Now, let's have a look at one piece of evidence. This is a study we published in 2005, where we gave a standard Simon task to children, young adults, middle-aged adults, and older adults. I'm plotting here the reaction time for congruent and incongruent trials. And what you can see is that on three of the cases and three of the age groups, the bilinguals in blue are faster than the monolinguals in red. The exception is young adults, where there is absolutely no difference. We reported that in 2005. And that has been replicated many times. Now, the paper that Pap and Greenberg published in 2013 used this task as well with young adults and then argued that our findings cannot be replicated. Here are their findings reported in their 2013 paper. Okay, they're identical to ours. It's a perfect replication. So something is going on here because the model is predicting outcomes that don't happen. So rather than saying there's no bilingual advantage, perhaps we can say, maybe the model is wrong. So let's take another look at the model. There is the Miyaki model and all of the problems I've discussed. So let's get rid of the components and look instead at the tasks. And what we can see is that to some extent, all of these tasks require inhibition, require attention. I should pay attention to my own speaking. All these tasks require attention. So maybe the effect of bilingualism is in how it modulates attention. Okay, so here's the alternative. As I said, when the predictions come from that componential model with inhibition as a main focus, what we have is transfer. The idea is that a skill built up in one context is transferred to a new context. And to the extent that it's well-practised and at a high level, it will also be at a high level in the new context. So inhibition of language transfers to inhibition of interfering perceptual information. That's the model that hasn't worked out so well. So let's instead think about adaptation. In adaptation, you have an underlying process that is relevant for several different skills. So let's assume that the two skills and the process are language selection and non-verbal selection. The underlying domain general process that doesn't care what it's applied to is selective attention. Now, we know a lot about the development of attention through the lifespan. And one thing we know is that it is indeed modulated by experience. So let's consider that selective attention developed in the context of bilingual experience modifies selective attention such that the ability of selective attention to influence all its tasks is therefore changed. There's no direct transfer. There's no one-to-one association. It's a modification of an underlying domain general skill because of experience. And that is what we mean by neuroplasticity. The experience-dependent adaptation of processes for new functions. So if we go back to this chart, we can possibly say that transfer could be used to talk about what's happening in the simple executive function cases. But it does not account for what we find in research with infants, older adults, and neuroimaging. A different kind of explanation is required. And I propose adaptation of attention systems. So what does this mean moving forward? The challenge now for the future is to identify the experience-related and context-related conditions that lead to adaptations in attentional function. Whoops, that's my last slide. I just clicked the wrong thing, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Ellen. Thank you. And so on to Antonella for the last presentation. And don't be shy, do ask questions in the Q and A chat.
Just a moment. Sorry, I'm trying to return to the first slide and just a moment. Yes, can you see it? Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Yes. Right, well, thank you very much, Christos and Ludovica, for having me at this panel. And I'm very excited and honoured. I'm an experimental linguist and I'm interested in both the scientific side of bilingualism, particularly the relationship between language and general cognition, and also the public and political side of bilingualism. But in the next 10 minutes, I'm going to focus only on the scientific side. But in the next 10 minutes, I'm going to focus only on the scientific side and my vision for the future of research in this domain. What do I mean by monolingual advantage? Now, I'm aware that I'm preaching to the converted here to some extent, and this general context and discussion is not brand-new. But it might be useful to remind ourselves of these general biases in research, which have been debated, yes, but not eliminated. So it's rather obvious that multilingualism is more normal than monolingualism in the world. But it's perhaps less obvious that the contexts in which linguistic research has been conducted and has thrived, for example, are monolingual contexts where one language is the official or unofficial norm. And this has contributed to the fact that both language in general and bilingualism have been seen through the lens of monolingualism. So we compare monolinguals and bilinguals. We compare native speakers and non-native speakers. Now, in linguistics, which is the field that I was trained in, right? The notion of the ideal native monolingual speaker, the way linguistic research was traditionally done, so categorical acceptability judgments by educated native speakers, and the definition of non-native speakers as approximations to the native norm. So look at that scale, you know, near-native is the highest. That means quite close to native, but not quite there. And I'm as guilty as anybody else for using that term. So I'm not blaming, I'm not blaming other people only. So all of these suggest that the native monolingual, not native monolingualism is the norm, the default. Now, in research on multilingualism and bilingualism, the advantages or disadvantages or simply effects of bilingualism are defined as, sorry, there's no, yeah, as deviations from the monolingual norm, right? So that's another example. Now, what does research show instead? It shows that this is an oversimplification of both bilingualism and monolingualism. So it shows that native monolingualism is, and probably has always been, an abstraction. So the native language that we learn in infancy, for example, is not static. This has been also said by before. But is and remains sensitive to experiences. So it is adaptable. So, for example, it was once believed that there was a critical period for the acquisition of the native language. And the native language, once acquired, would remain stable across the lifetime. And it was also believed that language learning would become more difficult, if not impossible, after the critical period. Now, this is not true. We have plenty of reason to think that the higher variability that we find among adult second language learners compared to child language learners is probably due to reduced availability of time, much more narrow focus and motivation for learning a language, very different experiential backgrounds and strong. So we are beginning to see, you know, things in a different way. But more crucially for today's topic, we also know that we are surrounded by languages, right? More and more people learn languages, even in a country like the UK, which I think is characterized by what I would call privileged monolingualism in many, in many ways. But even in this country, more and more people learn languages, and we live in increasingly multilingual societies. So we are surrounded by people who speak different languages. And I come to the point. Now, we have we have evidence that learning another language, not necessarily to high levels, and I'll come back to this, comes with predictable and completely natural changes in the native language. Now, this is often goes under the simplistic name of attrition, which suggests erosion and loss. I'm not talking about loss. I'm talking about natural changes that are not only due to the effects of a second language on the first language, like on that part of the screen. But also, it shows changes that are selective and independent of language combinations. Selective changes that start with processing particular language structures that require rapid integration of contextual features, so non-linguistic features. The ability to integrate language and general non-linguistic features. So this is, what we know is that these selective changes can be propagated in communities. So I'm an Atleti speaker of Italian, for example. If I speak to other Atleti speakers of Italian here, these changes propagate from speaker to speaker through mechanisms of priming and alignment that are well-understood and create the basis for language changes in the next generation, so inherited speakers. But also, in the much longer run, changes in dichronic terms in languages through repeated intergenerational transmission. But what I was going to say also is that what we see is a convergence between the changes in the native language and the second language speakers. So there is a convergence between the native language of bilinguals or people who are exposed to languages and the non-native language of second language speakers. So what do they show? They show the same markers of simplification. So yes, the language, the native language becomes simpler, but not randomly, in a random way. It becomes simpler in a specific way, in a way that magnifies communication efficiency. And this is seen as the optimal trade-off between simplicity and informativeness, which are two forces in conflict with one another. So the way the native language changes, it leads to a simplification that, but a simplification that magnifies communication, communication efficiency. And we know, for example, that widely spoken languages tend to be simpler. They tend to be simpler because they are learned by non-native speakers, for example. Now, we have another piece of the puzzle. So the native language actually changes too. And this further undermines this dichotomous contrast between bilinguals and monolinguals. We are beginning to explore now these convergences between native and changes in the native language and changes in the second language within the same individuals. Because so far, we've contrasted groups of people. But now, you know, we want to see whether there is this convergence within individuals and whether a greater convergence might be a marker of more proficient bilingualism, for example. Now, we also know that what we see might involve some components of attention or control. We don't know very well, you know, what's going on. But, for example, it might be that this lead towards simplicity comes from a trade-off between inhibitory control, right? Better inhibitory control, which is in trade-off, in a trade-off relationship with the ability to update and integrate new information. So this is something to be explored, that, you know, that might be a result of this trade-off. And, you know, this is something that we explored, you know, in a more superficial way years ago. Negative priming, for example, and how that correlates with disengagement of inhibition. So people may be less able or less efficient, bilinguals might be less able and less efficient at integrating information. This might be compensated for by enhanced perspective-taking abilities. And I would like to say that this is something else that we need to pay attention to. So there are different effects of bilingualism in different domains, on different components of general cognition, for example. We need to know, have a better understanding of how they affect each other. Because we have a tendency to analyze, okay, these are effects on, you know, attention. These are effects on perspective-taking. These are effects on, you know, self-bias. I mean, we have to come up with eventually an overall picture. So this is what I said. Yeah, this is the slide that I was supposed to show before, but it didn't, it didn't come through. So. Now, another interesting thing is that even passive exposure to multilingual societies can have an effect. And these effects are beginning to be studied. So we're talking about people who don't speak another language, but they are exposed to people speaking other languages in multilingual societies, in multilingual classrooms. So apparently, this kind of passive exposure can have some effects at the neurological level and possibly some effects at the behavioral level, except that we don't fully understand how these two, these two types of effect are related. So that means, again, that, you know, monolingualism, as we considered in the traditional comparisons between monolingual and monolinguals and bilinguals, we should really abandon it. So the ambient environment is another variable that we should consider, together with other sources of individual variation that have been mentioned before. And understanding how these, all these factors pan together really opens up a new research agenda on language, on learning, on cognition, together with, we hope, a better understanding of the complex connections between neuroplasticity and behavioral change. So what's the future? Does it mean that there are no advantages of bilingualism? No, it doesn't. But it means that we have to redefine the terms of comparisons with a more accurate view and understanding of how the different kinds of bilingual experience, as it's been said by my colleagues before, are combined to define specific neurological and behavioral patterns. So this means understanding, you know, better the concept of language distance, for example. People speak different varieties, dialects, ideologues, with varying degrees of typological similarities. It means understanding the role of attitudes, positive or negative attitudes towards bilingualism in particular languages, which is something that we've been working on. It means understanding the role of literacy or biliteracy. It means understanding the role of exposure to normal variation. So how many speakers are you exposed to? Speakers who speak naturally in different ways. So that is an important factor. And the degree of code-switching in the family and in communities, it's been mentioned many times. All of these are modulating factors. And understanding this really means that we are not talking about bilingual versus monolingual comparisons. We're talking about comparisons across a continuum, ranging from less bilingual to more bilingual or multilingual. So we're talking about gradients. We're talking about gradient rather than a dichotomous comparison. And I'm known for my work on gradients in natural language in a different area of my work. So more generally, I would like to say that the future lies in avoiding dichotomies. Avoiding dichotomies of all kinds. Dichotomies are very useful and very convenient sometimes. But I would say that if we learn to look both ways and overcome these dichotomies that we're used to, we certainly make research more complex, but also much more revealing and more interesting. So to conclude, both scientifically and politically, a crucial element for a new vision, the vision for the future of understanding bilingualism is understanding that the monolingual perspective has had an advantage in our scientific fields, in our societies. But this advantage has never been really justified, and it's even less justified now. Thank you.
Thank you, Antonella. Thank you, Thomas and Ellen as well, for, well, I guess mostly keeping to time, all of you, Antonella. I think I was kind of tempted to tell you to wrap it up, just not to eat into our discussion. So we have a few questions that, in the meantime, have materialized in the Q and A. But I'd just like to start by saying that I really liked the historical approach that you've taken. Because as I guess Thomas and Ellen were also saying, you can't know where we're going if you don't know where we're coming from. And I guess if we've learned anything, is that bilingualism is gradient, is very complex, is very multifaceted, and it's dynamic. And also, what we're finding can actually restructure our theoretical understanding of language and cognition. So, you know, not be shy to see, you know, what has bilinguals told us that can revise our assumptions about how language and cognition interact. And so I may have something to say at the end, but I think that my role also is to facilitate really questions coming from the floor. I'm not taking them in chronological order. I'm trying sort of to bring them together. There were, I think, a couple of questions that you can all answer, really, about the value of meta-analysis. So I think there were a couple of people. So Michael is asking about analysis and also Robert Artzeker is speaking to that. So when they say, so what is the value of meta-analysis? Meta-analysis good or bad? Obviously, again, we know that it's neither or. But can you, can you speak a little bit about what you think about that?
With pleasure. Well, I think the problem is not the meta-analysis per se, because it's a fantastic method. But the problem is the belief that it will solve all our questions. So in a way, for me, it's part of the kind of bigger problem that we have, I would say, a projection of religious longing into science, the longing for ultimate certainty. If you want ultimate certainty, science is not a good place to go. Science is about uncertainty, about discovering new things, about developing. And what you could see, for instance, in all these presentations is how much our views have changed, let's say, since 1962. It's not that Peter Lambert was stupid. It's just that we have learned a lot. And hopefully, in, you know, seven years or so, we'll have learned a lot as well. So the problem with meta-analysis is that if we believe that just because all the studies were put together, it will come some kind of ultimate truth, is problematic. Because firstly, the studies don't have the same quality. They can come, for instance, from very, very biased surroundings. So you could have, you know, 10 studies from one place and then maybe one from the other. The studies, by the way, will very often, the number of participants will very often reflect, for instance, the financial, economical power of, you know, a research group because of grants and so on, so on. So we have to take all these things into account. And just last example, which I find important. It's not that a small study is always worse. I mean, small studies, for instance, can be much more precise in the characterization of the group. So for instance, one of the studies that I have done, you know, 2014, was based on loss in birth cohort, where we could really see how people performed 2000, sorry, yeah, in 1947, when they were 11-year-old. And they are now in the 70s. Of course, it's not, we cannot get thousands of people. We got, you know, 650. But I mean, this is a unique group from which we can learn something, which cannot be replicated easily. So I think from this point of view, meta-analysis, yes. But like with other studies, there is no one ultimate one that will tell everything. There will be always questions. And to every question answered, there will be certainly few coming up.
I'd like to add a few points on meta-analysis. It's a very important tool, but it's a tool that is extremely theoretically guided from the very beginning, when you pose the question, to the really important decision about inclusion and exclusion criteria, and finally, to the interpretation of the outcome. But instead of going through all those factors, I want to make one point. There was a paper published a couple of years ago on the conditions for meta-analysis, and it's very interesting. It's really telling. The best application of meta-analysis is to understand the trends in a group of studies of a very narrowly-defined question on very similar populations using almost the same instrument. It's a data reduction technique for studies that are extremely similar. And if you go through the criteria that are identified in that paper, of them are met by the research on bilingualism and cognition. Would mean all of the meta-analyses in this field suffer from variability that exceeds the bounds of the instrument.
Antonelli, if you don't mind.
I'll just add that, you know, given the extreme variation in how different studies recruit, you know, bilinguals and monolinguals, you know, and, you know, the different criteria, sometimes the criteria simply means, you know, asking people, "Do you speak any language?" "Yes, come and do the study." Right. That is not, you know, a very accurate criteria. So if we have, you know, we could have 2,000 studies, you know, they use very, very different, you know, criteria for recruiting, you know, participants in studies. That's not going to give us a very clear picture or a clearer picture. So adding numbers, you know, just for the sake of it, if we don't really have clear criteria. if we don't really have clear criteria for defining, you know, who's bilingual and who's monolingual, with the provisos that I was talking about earlier, then, you know, meta-analysis, yes, in principle, very useful, but in practice, they don't really address the question.
Okay, so I've got another questions, again, sort of theoretical questions by Robert Hatzke. So he's asked, well, there is a question specific to Ellen, but there is one generic to all the panelists. So I'll ask that one first. So Robert Hatzke asks, "Are current proposals of bilingual language control, including Green and Abudlebi, 2013, precise enough to make detailed predictions about which bilingual experiences have what consequences?"
Can you repeat? You cut out. I'm sorry, you cut out. I didn't hear what you said.
So Robert is asking whether current proposal of bilingual language control, so for example, Green and Abudlebi, 2013, are precise enough to make detailed predictions about which bilingual experiences have what consequences for attention and control? And also, do we understand executive functions enough to get a grip on how they can be affected by bilingual experience? So this is a question for all of you. So whoever wants to.
Well, the question about which bilingual experience is an empirical question. And many of us are currently engaged in looking at it. I think it's an important question. I think it's absolutely clear from the range of research results we now face that this isn't a simple binary across-the-board effect. Some types of experience impact some of these cognitive effects, maybe more than others, maybe not at all. But right now, I think what we're beginning to understand is that we have to figure out which of the aspects are. The other direction there is that recent studies are looking at bilingualism as a continuum of experience. And there are fantastic data showing calibrations between degree of bilingual experience and degree of outcome. That's telling us a lot about these neuroplastic processes. So, you know, I would say the question's exactly right and it's what we need to figure out and then several of us are working on it.
Well, I would stress what I said before, that it's important to see it as a journey rather than a point to arrive. And in fact, I didn't have time for it. But I mean, one year after 2013, David Green published a paper with Li Wei, who comes more from a kind of sociolinguistic perspective. And I think we should have more papers like this, where we get together with sociolinguists, because they can help us to describe different types of bilingual experience and so on. And the same with executive functions. I mean, they have been, so to say, introduced into literature in eighties, nineties in the context of frontal disorders. And it was recognized from the beginning that things don't dissociate. It's not kind of one single function. So the idea that there will be an advantage on all functions is completely naive from the beginning. I think we are still, and we will still be, on a long journey to try to find out what exactly and how exactly those functions relate to each other.
And can I just add? Yes, I mean, I don't work primarily on executive functions. You know, I'm on the linguistics side. But what I can see is, for example, that, you know, once we look at, you know, components of executive functions, you know, we find that they interact in very interesting ways. And, you know, we're not always talking about, you know, you know, an advantage, you know. Again, you know, if we want to use this, you know, point of comparison that I was criticizing. So sometimes, you know, we see effects in the opposite direction. But the other thing, I think it's really important, what I've been struck about, and many of the people that I work with are also struck about, is the fact that, you know, much of this work has been compartmentalized. You know, so, you know, there are people who work on executive functions. There are people who work on other aspects of cognition and so on. We should find, yes, I mean, obviously, we need more work on each of these aspects, but we should, at some point, you know, really try to see how they interact with one another. And, you know, I was talking about, you know, for example, these studies on perspective-taking. Yes, I mean, you know, you can subject them to the same kind of scrutiny as the studies on executive functions. You have small samples, you know, who are you comparing to whom and so on and so forth. But, you know, there are studies, there are results coming out of that. How do those results? I know that there has been some research looking at the executive function component in ignoring one's perspective and embracing the other person's perspective. But that's not the only component. I mean, we need to understand how different strands of research are, you know, connected with one another.
And technically, we've reached the end of our session, but I think there are so many interesting questions coming from the Q and A that I think I will keep it going for a couple, you know, for maybe a couple more questions and, you know, another ten minutes or so, depending on how concise you are in your answers. And so there are a couple of questions from people that ask about the implications of research findings for speakers of minority languages. So I'm going to read one out by Caterina Pantula, who says, many thanks for your presentation. "How could, in terms of dissemination practice, behavioral and neuropsychological stroke imaging research impact positively on the lifespan and language profile of speakers in minority and dialectal communities?" Don't know if it's something that, again, you know, those of you perhaps that are engaged in disseminating these findings to people that live in...
Now, can I just say, yeah, I mean, we do a lot of work with minority languages in different countries. And the main point is that, yes, from a linguistic and psychological point of view, a minority language is like any other language. A dialect is another, like another language, a variety, you know. So all of these are political terms, right? You know, what is a dialect? What is a variety? What is, from a cognitive point of view, you know, there isn't difference among them. On the other hand, there are different attitudes towards them. And this is what we need to understand better. And we did a study, for example, on the perception that children have about their being bilingual with particular minority languages. And, you know, and the perception of the surrounding environments, you know, their family, their schools and so on. And we wanted to see whether these positive attitudes somehow were related to a higher level of proficiency in the minority language, but also perhaps to better results in cognitive performance in particular tests. And we have some evidence that, you know, there is a relation. We need a lot more research. But all this to say that, yes, from a cognitive point of view, minority languages, absolutely, you know, they are a resource. You know, politically, we want to say you should invest in minority languages. They are a resource, right? But at the same time, we have to work on information. We have to work on changing the attitudes of people that sometimes see these languages that are not useful or even ugly sometimes and all the rest.
I mean, can I give a very quick illustration? I was on the way in Sheffield from the station to the Brain Research Centre. And the taxi driver, when he heard "brain", said, "Oh, so are you kind of a brain person?" I said, "Well, I work on brain language." And then he asked, "Oh, so is it true if I speak more than one language, it's good against dementia? Because I speak Urdu and Punjabi and I'm thinking, was I should teach my children?" I think that's exactly the example. I think we are getting there because people realize that, no, let's say, speaking Urdu and Punjabi doesn't mean that you are an inferior person. In fact, it's something positive that should be practiced and should be given to the next generation.
Okay, so and I've got a kind of follow-up question. So there's actually taking, looking at the monolingual side of things. So Joanna John asks, wonderful panel discussions. Many thanks, my question. "Where do exposures to different regional varieties and to different registers of the same language fit into your definition of the monolingual?" So is there a bilingual continuum on the monolingual end of things as well?
I would definitely say yes. I mean, we don't have enough data on that. You know, we need to do a lot more research on this. But again, you know, on the assumption that different varieties or different dialects, as, you know, they are sometimes called, you know, we're talking about exposure to, you know, linguistic variation. And that might have, you know, an effect. Like, you know, I was talking about passive, effects of passive exposure. So even if you don't understand consciously or speak consciously these languages, you know, there may be effects that are not completely understood. So, and again, you know, we have to remind people that varieties, again, are, these are political terms. My mother was from Sardinia, and Sardinian is a language, but she used to call Sardinian a dialect. And she never spoke it to me.
I mean, I couldn't agree more. And I think here, again, we need more diversity. So for instance, in many languages, there's an incredible gap between the spoken language and the written form. I mean, not only written, the formal one. Let's say in Arabic, classical Arabic versus the dialects or in Tamil, classical Tamil and so on. We don't know how this relates to each other. In East Asian languages, we have an incredibly different, I mean, complexity of different registers, of politeness whom you speak with and so on. A fascinating topic has not been addressed, as far as I know. So I think we should really take the richness, the linguistic riches of the world in terms of forms of language, in terms of dialect and so on, as a fantastic laboratory in which we can start these questions.
Okay, so I've got one more question that I think, and then I have a little question of my own. So I'm going to go back to a little bit of like the theoretical side of things. And this is actually a question for Ellen, but again, other people might have something to say. So Robert Hatzke, again, sort of asks, "Adaptation rather than transfer is a very interesting idea. Is there an empirical way of distinguishing between a transfer and an adaptation effect?"
It's an important question, and this is what we're trying to figure out. So one thing that we're working on now is changing the paradigm in the following way. If it's transfer, means you have something to transfer, like inhibition, like working memory. Doesn't matter what it is. So you build it up in one context, test it, and then you test somebody with a different context that you're presuming is using the same process, inhibition, working memory shifting. And to the extent that their poor performance on these two different tasks are associated, you say, ah, inhibition of language transferred to inhibition of other word in the strip task or working memory for digits transferred to working memory, whatever. So we're not doing that. What we're doing is taking a single task, a single paradigm. And we've tried it with a number of paradigms. But the one that is most complete now is a working memory task called the M-Back. So you just see a series of slides. And the slide will have a single stimulus on it. Let's say they're digits. So you say, three, two, six, five. And the task is to determine if the slide you're looking at now is the same as the slide you looked at and slides previously. One back, did you just see it? Two back, did you see it two ago and so forth? So the task is identical. Nothing changes. There's no transfer, there's no spillover. It's the same task. The only thing that's different is that it gets harder. Because as you're looking back more slides, you need more attention, more effortful focus, more, I believe, this underlying domain general resource, which is attention. So we're comparing, not across tasks, not across anything, but as the task gets more effortful, because the same task demands more attention, do you see any changes in outcomes? And yes, you do. That's exactly what you see. On the easy conditions, monolinguals and bilinguals are exactly the same. As it becomes more difficult, the groups begin to diverge. Because the bilinguals have more resources. They've got more leftover attention that they are still on top of it as the task gets more demanding. So all that's changed is the resource demand. Nothing has transferred. So that's one of the ways that we're now looking at testing the idea that you can see group differences dictated by anything in that executive function model, but by manipulating the overall demands for attention.
Thank you, Ellen. Sorry, I don't know if it was just me, but you was cutting out a little bit at the end. But I think we got, I'd say ninety-nine point nine percent of what you said. So thank you very much. That was a very exhaustive answer. So I'm afraid, in the interest of timekeeping, we have to wrap up the question. But I have to say, in your very informative and exhaustive answers, you actually preempted some of the questions that were in the Q and A that I didn't get to ask because you were answering them as you went along. So I just wanted to, you know, just want to find a remark, really, more than a question. So I really liked, and I think it was, perhaps Thomas had mentioned that at the beginning, the fact that science, not just in the field of bilingualism, obviously, but in any field, is incremental. So there isn't, you know, one lone scholar, one lab that is going to give us all of the answers that we're ever going to need, probably not even in our lifetime. So I was just wondering what you, on the panel, think about initiatives like the many babies, for example, where researchers come across from all over the world. They take, you know, just one experiment and try to replicate it. You know, obviously, in the case of bilingual participants, it would have to be with many different types of population and decide what kind of variables, you know. It's one task. And across labs, we all decide to choose the same protocol. And we document very clearly what kind of populations, in what kind of context, what kind of life. You know, whatever we decide are at least some of the variables that are affecting, you know, maybe affecting our results. What do people think?
I'm not a fan. And I'm not a fan because we've talked about all of the incredibly complex ways that these questions are impacted by populations, environments, tasks, even little things that you can easily control, like how many milliseconds between presentations and the task. But, you know, as Antonella showed, even when you're talking about monolinguals, how much exposure to a bilingual community? There are already really interesting data showing that this all matters very much. So my question would be, what is achieved by having different groups? Is it to say, I don't believe you. Let me see if I can do it for myself. And unless I can do it. Well, I mean, a lot of the effort towards pre-registered studies carried out globally has that kind of undercurrent that I find anti-scientific. So collaboration across groups, absolutely. Global collaboration, bringing attention about how to describe different populations and then create common experiments, yes. But there's something about the formalization, about reproducing experiments, that I don't find scientifically interesting.
I would have never thought that one day I will cite Ronald Rumsfeld in my scientific discussion. But I think the problem here is also the unknown unknowns. Where you have this kind of big study, you assume that you have a model, and then you are testing it everywhere. You might miss things because you simply haven't looked at it. If you don't go up to La Paz, you don't know that there will be a different boiling temperature. And that's the problem which I address with asymmetrical globalization. It will be a design developed somewhere in Texas or in London, and then we just look whether it also works in other places. I think I would see rather that we should have the variety, the diversity, and then try to distill something, and then we could go to the last. And the last point I wanted to make is, I mean, just because that is something which, you know, Antonella mentioned a little bit, but I think we should also take into account. Language is not just about communication. It is also very much about identity. And that's why I, for instance, think that it's so important to bring sociolinguistic into it. So in a way, another variable that we haven't even managed to touch upon. So I think the danger I see with this is that, you know, we have, if we put all our energies in this kind of one thing, it will in some way petrify the biases that we have today, maybe for years to come, instead of having a science which is incremental, which develops, which questions and brings new things again and again.
Okay, do you have a different view from Antonella, who seems to be muted? Sorry, Antonella, I don't.
No, no, fine, I can hear you. I mean, I'll just, just one sentence, you know, I really, I really think that Ellen has a point. I think collaboration among labs is absolutely essential, and there should be more of this, right? But not necessarily collaboration in replicating exactly the same, the same, the same model. You know, collaboration on addressing different aspects of the same question, for example, right? Yeah, inevitably, you know, with different, different samples, different populations, you know, and bearing in mind what these differences might mean, you know, and what variables are involved. But, yeah, I think collaboration across labs is absolutely essential, and we should do, we should have more than we have at the moment.
Okay, thank you very much for your answer. Like I said, I'm afraid we have to wrap it up, we're running a little bit late, but it was just so interesting, we couldn't, we couldn't cut you off. So thank you so much. We had more than 240 people. Listen, I think this has probably been the most well-attended session of the conference.